Are we going to call the meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees to order for May 27, 2014? If everybody else stands for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before us, we have our agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads? Seems on the agenda will stand as is. Two points of notice. Ms. Campbell is not here this evening. She had given the board prior notice, so that's approved. And then, for the record, Mr. Geovasis is going to need to be excused early for his son's graduation. Is there anything else? Okay. That's going to take us to the sheriff's report, and we're going to turn that right over to Lieutenant John Oliver from Mr. Rock County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. I won't take up too much of your time. What I brought for you is a copy of a resolution that Jackson Township passed in reference to taking hotel information. Just to give you a little brief insight, what we do, we run into problems in the motels around this area. A lot of drug dealers have been using them here lately. A lot of heroin problems. They're jumping back and forth from Plain Township motels to Jackson motels, back and forth, so we don't try to catch up with them. Depending on who's on duty inside the motel office, you may get information, you may not get information. A lot of times, that causes us a hindrance, maybe trying to track down the manager, which could be one to two days later. This resolution, basically, what it does is that when a person checks into a room, they have to present a photo ID. So then, it's documented by that clerk on duty. It's documented who the name on the room is in, plus vehicle information also. This has to be retained for three years, which is good for us in law enforcement because we can work off historical information. We can take that back and we can use it, whether it just be with the Stone County Sheriff's Office, FBI, it could be any agency can use it. Just to give you some facts, just three weeks ago, we had a gentleman staying at the Knights Inn. He would leave there, he'd stay there for two, three days, then he would move over to Motel 6. When he moved to Motel 6, we had a young man go buy a big old heroin, walked over to the VP on Portage, overdosed in the bathroom. We was able to make an arrest, but this is just some of the things that's coming into play with the motels now. I recommend that myself and Deputy Koenig could go out and make the notice service to these motels, and at the same time, we can introduce ourselves, let them know who they would be in contact with. Let them know also, this is not going to be a daily thing where we could go in there, hey, let me look at your register. We just need this for investigative purposes, case by case.
Any questions? Is Jackson tested by home rule?
Yeah, it's a home rule. I looked at it, it's a home rule, and it's $500 for the first violation, $1,000 for the second, and each subsequent. And the violation would be if they didn't comply with the registration requirements or failed to furnish it upon request.
And now, that citation's issued by?
By the Sheriff's Department, correct.
Would you along when they go to speak to the managers of these hotels? Do we have something written from our law director, too? Or you stay out of this?
I stay out of it because I think the legislation speaks for itself. What they put together in Jackson's pretty comprehensive, I felt like. Did you work with them to do that?
No, I did not work with them. I understood what they were doing, what they were after. One of their agents had assigned the FBI task force to want to push it. But they have a lot more cooperation with their motels, too. I will say that, yes. It depends on who's working and when we go. I will say Knights Inn, for example. Manager of Knights Inn, he's very forthcoming. I went to him, I needed the information. Made it go to Pontiac, Michigan, testify in a parole hearing. I went to him, Barry Miller's name. I said, Barry, I need some information. Boom, he gave it to me, I was out the door. Now, if I go there and Barry Miller's not there, then I hit a roadrunner. And that's what this prevents.
So is that something that's really outside of your control, as well as ours, as far as the individual being willing to comply? And this tool will address that, yeah?
Correct.
Well, I think the thing to remember, I'm sure you'll agree with me, is this is only as good as the information they're given, too. I mean, keep that in mind, but yeah.
Because if somebody's got a fake ID, or they stole it, or whatever.
If you're going to do what these guys are doing, then maybe, there may be ways around it.
Yeah, and before, you know, they weren't required to show a photo ID, maybe, or they walk in, you know, who knows? They could walk in, slip the clerk a $20 bill, and say, hey, give me a room. Maybe they get the room. But if now, if they know that we can come around, and we may be checking, maybe they'll, you know, attempt to do this out.
The only thing I would want to check before you put something like this, that maybe it's from next meeting or whatever, is do you want to look at 504 and make sure that nothing like this is prohibited? Because that has a list of things, I don't have them all committed to memory, but it has a list of things that you can't regulate through home rule. I highly doubt this would be on it. Remember, we did the one with the pawn shops?
Yes.
And we haven't had any issues with that. So I think this is probably pretty similar. I think it's fine, but I just want to look, to be sure.
There were questions, since we're on the subject. Do we have any scrap yards in Township?
Didn't we do something with them?
Well, no, they're out. The one we had was on hers, her pool, yeah, closed.
Yeah. I think we did, but we did something with those.
We had a problem, we had a problem.
Yeah.
You know, giving it a high sign.
Who might have just dropped off some stones, you know?
And I had the problem if it gives them a tool to help fight this. Prove what's coming in and out, or get it eradicated.
Makes some people visiting those hotels safer, too, because...
Because that's something, explosions, catches fire, you've got other hazards there as well, so.
They have to do that much on there, too. Found those in those.
Can you go pray to our law director, Mike? Just tweak it a second, make sure we're going to look at. I know we have that resolution. Eric, for the sake of process here, if we took this in our language, essentially, we're the... Next meeting, we would agree to pass it to them because it's a right home rule. It's got to be published, right? Right there, 30 days before it officially goes into...
Correct. And there's a little, it's usually a little more than 30 because it takes us a while to get it through the fiscal office, to the repository, through, but yeah, it'd be somewhere in the 45-day timeframe, or it would be effective.
So we'd be looking back next meeting?
July, I guess.
Yeah, mid-July.
This is something, I mean, how, personally, how soon would you like this to be done? Because, I mean, we've done a special meeting, but we could say through these two weeks.
Sooner, better. But, I mean, there's one emergency.
We could do it. Once our law director looks at it. Because now, we have to wait two weeks to another meeting, two more meetings. Two weeks. How long will you do a special meeting? This way, it lasts a week, and then the rest of it has to be scheduled. How much time would it take you properly?
Honestly, I can look tonight, while some of the items that maybe don't need my meeting attention. And he's gassy. But yeah, I can, all I want to do is go through the list to make sure it's not prohibited. Otherwise, what I've looked at, I looked at this, I think Lisa shot me a copy a couple of days ago. You got it. I've looked through it, and it looks, it looks pretty standard. So I'm happy to have you.
Let us know that if we need to, just whether it's over a launch or something that expedited, or...
We'll send the meeting to you.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Is there anybody in the crowd that has anything for the sheriff's office? Okay. Now, close out the sheriff's report. We have nothing out of the detective's report. It's going to take us to unfinished business. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Iacino.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is a resolution to authorize the purchase of additional equipment from 2015 Ford Explorer Interceptor Cruiser to exceed $16,000. It's similar to what we did on the last two of the equipment that is needed.
So the cage isn't a great idea. Also move on unfinished business number one. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes. Item number two is the auction rack, wrap-up. Luther broke it down, and Mr. Flex, for each department. As noted there, we did pretty good, I think.
Was there anything left over afterwards?
I have a engine and a skid of old radios that we've contacted the auctioneer today because he's the only one with the guy's personal information. He said, I'll hold it for another week. I'm going to hold it, what am I going to do with it?
Paid for it?
Yeah. Because everything was paid for, as far as I understand it. So just getting them to pick it up. But everything else has been picked up.
Okay, and there was nothing that did sell?
Yeah, we had a skid of, what was it, from?
Paper towel dispenser rollers.
Paper towel dispenser rollers that were, an old desk.
Are these things that should be donated or scrapped? So we don't have junk playing around?
We couldn't even get a dollar for them. I was trying to give away that, the people that were loading up the trucks and nobody wanted. The stuff that's been sitting around so long.
Let's get rid of that.
We put it underneath our resolutions, they were already out of scrap.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Joe. Just keep with new business.
Item number one is false alarms.
Also move on new business number one. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And then, actually, you know what?
Tornado warning alarm, versus I'm supposed to turn it over to Mr. Scollis.
You know what, actually, we, I had meant to have this one ruled, I had asked to have it put on. There's going to be just a follow-up conversation with the resident directly on that, and then if there's any further discussion by the board, so. Is this related to the email? Yeah. So there's, we're going to leave that as table.
Item number three is parking at Old Station 4, private property. Mr. Geovasis, Mr. Leno, I'm sure this is...
I guess we'll start, I guess there's some... Mixed feelings about this. I did get a phone call again, Eric, from Mike Thompson. I guess what's due is the individual's attorney that has the building to develop, or on this one here.
No.
Or, or down, down road. And he asked me how I personally felt about it. I said, personally, not only speaking myself, I said, I'm okay with it, as long as there's proper agreements drawn up that would, number one, allow us, if there was issues, to revoke it. I mean, if it became a problem. Because I think he was asking for six parking spaces, and I think there'd be some concerns with people, more people pulling up there and parking in the grass and doing some other things, or walking. People being in and out of it. If that ever became an issue that should be revoked, I think it's also open for negotiation, if we're able to recharge maybe an access fee to do that. And Joe said he had some concerns, that, you know, like the ditch, that would have to be drawn in there, that would have to be piped in, and I, you know, just filled it. There'd have to actually be a pipe put underneath there and then ditch so the water can flow. But, I mean, I told him if the proper agreement was in place, I would be open to, you know, the discussion, you know, what the other, the other two board members feel. That's up to them, and you know more than we do out of these doubts. And you don't like well, but I'm sure if you guys could work out an agreement, probably it would be amenable, but I guess that's limited to what we can or can't do.
Right.
I do know, previously, I think the reason we shied from it was because of a fire, a fire running out of there. So I'm concerned, I know, at the time.
Yeah, I think that was one of the issues. I also think we were concerned about allowing it to be used for free, but because it's taxpayer-owned. I mean, you know, the citizen's own property, and to get, just let someone to use it to benefit their business without recouping anything was a concern.
And I think they're open to the idea of leasing the space, but I think it has to be drawn with a clause, a revocable clause, within 30 days' notice if it's an issue, or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, the way that I would fashion that would be that it's revocable immediately at our full discretion for any reason. Because quite frankly, if we come up with a need for that, you know, it's going to trump anything that they're doing at a private entity. So I'd be real concerned about that as well, that we have an opt-out provision. Yeah, remember the three of us.
We were with us.
Yeah.
That's right, you and the three of us met.
And we wrote a letter to Mr. North back in January of 2013. Audit and, basically, what we stated, this decision, we denied him at that time.
Right, right.
And said, "This decision is based upon concern about possible blocking of the driveway with emergency vehicles and use of the yard waste recycling center, possible overflow parking at the fire station resulting in pedestrian safety problems, and use of public properties for private gain."
Yeah, that was the concern with the lack of a fee somehow. How much is, how much traffic is generated there now with the recycling and all that kind of stuff? Is there a trade?
Pretty busy. Mr. Iacino.
This time of year, it's good.
Mr. Iacino, he had a good point, that now you've got six, I think he wants six spaces, right? So you've got the six spaces, now they're opened up, now they're blacked out. Now, six spaces are taken, and now you've got more people showing up. They think, well, I was going to park here, now I can't. Now they're parking the driveway. Now we've got people brought in, now with...
The driveway's not that wide.
So that was a concern. Well, that's why I mean that agreement had to be drawn up, made clear. He's limited to six people that occupy that space without parking in the grass and other places along a good place. Because that's what he's asking for, six spots. Joe, what I'm hearing from you, though, is even with the spaces, given the narrowness of it and the traffic that's coming in and trying to back out, that's...
We can't have anything blocked now. Even if they got two tires in the grass right now, it's still only a 16-foot wide, at the most. There's people coming in there with trailers and stuff and dumping their yard waste. You get in and out of there, you know, somebody's parked there. Earlier this winter, I found a car parked there. The guy was in the dog park. He went through this gate there, right?
Oh, yeah, it's on the corner between.
I made him move his car. He was parked in the middle of the lane.
That's the concern. Yeah. And I think that's what we went out and looked at. We thought, wow, this is tight here.
I mean, you get something to be done with those parking signs down that side of that driveway?
We could always post the parking signs.
I think if there's a way to try to accommodate the guy, if we can collect the fee for the use of the land, and it helps the business over there, I mean, we should try. If it doesn't work out, it's your vote.
I guess we'll ask, how do you put a price to something like that?
So what did you? You could charge.
Sorry, I don't need to charge for that thing.
I could probably find one. I know across, there's a gentleman that just auctioned off six parking spaces over there off of Tusk. And they auctioned them off. He was charging them $50 a month to park there.
Per space.
Per space, so that doesn't mean you charge $50 a spot. You charge per, per month, per space. That guy did all that?
You guys come, I mean, there's obviously, there's a legal way to put it together.
I think what maybe we, actually, you should do is call Mike Thompson and see what his thinking is and what, you know, what we're thinking versus what he's thinking. And let's start from there.
Sure.
And bring it back for our next meeting. You know, what he's actually looking for and what versus what we're looking for, and then we'll leave it open for discussion, make a decision then. But I think maybe you talk to Mike to get an idea. If we became the landlords of the spot, that we had total control of that spot, so if we find that there's cars parking along that driveway, we don't like it, as landlords, we tell the guy that this is no longer allowed, and this spot's a loss. We get control, we don't have to give money, but we can be the landlord of this spot, and sure. But I think he's willing to put the spots, and he's willing to pay, that paid on the asphalt and put the pipe and everything else in it.
Do they have to be asphalt, or do the pipes still?
Well, this drainage ditch there, so it's going to have to be filled in with something.
It's going to have to have a pipe, but it's going to have to be filled. And he wants to do that at his expense.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would share that.
No. If he wants to do that at his expense. He's going to cut six trees down and put the, what? Those trees are his.
Those are his trees. We clearly determined that.
The reality is, if they're looking for parking spaces, they're going to need to take down more than just those six trees to take a life site, or anything like that. Just remember, you're once, let's say you build six spaces, and they come back, and I want 12 spaces, then I want 18 spaces.
How do they all know?
How would this play into anything else that we have, maybe with our other parks or township facilities, where?
We want to think about that. Where you are located, similarly situated, you're going to want to give some thought to. Because if, you know how this stuff goes. If you do it one place, somebody's going to come to you in a month and say, oh, over there by Diamond, there's an entryway that backs up against my whatever. I don't know that there is, but...
There is.
Okay.
One of our roads.
So get ready, because that request is coming then, you know, 60 days back. So just another thing to be aware of.
I'm just saying, talk to the, talk to his attorney and see if there's any way we can help accommodate the guy that's manageable for us, Texas, at the same time.
Do you guys want me to do that?
I'll see you. I'm very, I'm personally hesitant about it. If the guy does go, say there's a workable plan, he invests the money. I'm just thinking, if I'm him, and I say, okay, well, I'm going to put in the drain, okay, to have the drain and the proper surface in there, and then you guys can relent this week at any point in time.
Well, that's not going to happen. If he puts in, invests for it, even within 30 days.
That's one of the people parking there, he brought them in. No, Mike said he was open to a revocable agreement.
Actually, this guy spends all that money.
But I told him, we're not paying to put it in. That's how we're going to launch.
I mean, I'm happy to call if that's what the board wants me to do.
And tell them that they're cautious about it, you know? But I've got to be some guarantees. At least, I'm open to our law director's decision. And if our law director tells me something different, then I'd like to try to get this recommendation from our law director. So that's my decision. I'm open to the idea, but I hope that... Have the conversation, if you don't get the feel that it's best interest.
I'll just report to you the next meeting, what Mike and I come up with, in a general sense.
But you're going to give a call?
Yeah, I'll call tomorrow.
I apologize, gentlemen, I'm going to head to the circus center. Okay, so that's going to...
Congratulations.
...close out the new business. That's going to take us to the fiscal officer's report. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Flex.
Hey, Mr. President of the Fiscal Officer, report number one. Is it a request for a resolution about a Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Hott, authorized the payment of the penalty warrants in $211,000, $200,000, and $7,000. Essentially, it's attached here, too.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss, number four is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize the payment of regular payroll in the amount not to exceed $220,000.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Leno?
Yes.
fiscal officer number three is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees of Stark County Hott, authorizes the payment of the following medical claims as provided by healthcare and medical mutual.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
fiscal officer number four is the investment report.
Okay.
fiscal officer number five is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees of Stark County Hott, authorizes the following transfers.
So moved. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Uh, yes.
And Mr. Leno?
Yeah.
Hello? And that concludes the fiscal officer report.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. We're going to take it for the administrator. And then turn to Mr. Iacino.
Item number one is a resolution that the medical premium for medical expenses be increased to $75 a month and $105 for a family effective October 1st, 2014. Be it further resolved that the following wellness discounts will apply to the employee-paid premiums. Mr. Black.
Also move on administrator number one.
Second.
Discussion, just as a point of clarification. I know this is what we discussed at the last meeting. It's based upon feedback from our healthcare provider. It's a way to consent the behavior that we need to help better manage our risk pool and so forth. So if folks at least complete three of the things. The first being a tobacco-free discount, the second, just declaring a primary care physician, and third being a wellness visit, essentially, your cost pulled flat. So...
This increases if these people do not complete...
So if they don't do these things, will they go to that increase? Yes. Now, you can earn more, you can earn one, or you can earn all, not three. So if, say you chose a primary care physician, don't do tobacco, you'll get two of those three.
Two and three kind of go together.
Yeah, exactly. Do you have any...
No. This is the wellness visit status every month.
I think the wellness business, just once a year, that's like your, that's like your physical, is what it is. No further discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Close is the administrator section. Fire Department Attorney, Chief Snyder.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is the resolution to authorize the purchase of one ambulance, the Lifeline, 2015 Lifeline, highlight ambulance conversion from people on severe, sale of estate to hospitalization.
Also move on fire number one. Discussion, Chief, just to keep a little insight as to the unit this will be replacing, what will be done with the unit that it's replacing.
We have three older vehicles. Uh, this will be replacing, actually, a 97, uh, tobacco right now. So one of our first-line vehicles that are 2006, it's got about 130,000 miles on it. Uh, that'll be moved to a second-line vehicle, and then, uh, then our second-line vehicle we currently have, which is, like I said, a 97, that'll be, I put it on Gov. deals, I'm trying to unload that. So, um, this is gonna replace a first-line vehicle right now that's a 97, 2006, about 130,000 miles on it, and then, uh, the backup vehicle that we're currently moving.
Now, how's this chassis and so forth look as compared to our current main first-line? Is there gonna be drastic difference?
Pretty much the same chassis, same locks. Uh, I know I had a discussion with the dealer. I was a little surprised on the estimate of the cost compared to the last one, about was in 2009. Uh, we're looking at about a 20% increase between the chassis and the locks. So this is '09. So, I guess, just the materials and everything else has gone up.
The main equipment that has to be in there.
So, yeah, I was hoping it would be around 220, but we're a little bit.
Where, you know, what's the lead time pending?
Six months.
Six months.
One thing we did add into this vehicle, none of our current vehicles have, is some extra support in the subframe. Um, if you choose down the road to go to a lift system for, um, a larger, you know, patient, you know, that'll hold, you know, with it, without the guys actually lifting and putting in vehicles besides the cots that we have, it'd be a big lift system for, uh, for these patients. So the subframe is about $1,200, $18,000 more to put that subframe in and to build that in the vehicle.
Any discussion here, but any other points, chief, or are you good?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I called him back, and I did talk to the dealership, you know, regarding the costs, and he got back, and we were able to cut about $4,000, $5,000 back based on some pain and some other things. Um, so, uh, but that's the bottom line of it, you know?
Just for the sake of the record, the fact, I know you've looked at more than one vendor in discussion.
You've had. Yeah, exactly.
Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Chief, just gonna take us to the road department. Turn that over to Mr. Iacino.
Mr. Chairman, item number one is a resolution to direct the highway superintendent to place an advertisement for bids for the 2014 Heli and Road project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Item number two is a resolution to authorize the person of temporary no parking for the community soccer club on Alpine Street and Easton next weekend, right, Rob?
Yes.
Came as a request to Rob from the neighbors after the last lacrosse tournament happened.
That is correct. They had parking on both sides of the road that prohibited vehicle traffic on, um, Alpine, east of the Pine Creek intersection. So, um, they wanted to aggressive proactive.
Any further discussion?
We're already going for time at the next day.
We made the motion at the second, right?
Yeah.
Also move, second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Item number three is just informational for the board. Lexington Farms, number three, a lot of complain towns have performance on, on plane. They have not completed everything on the, uh, performance. If you could see the amount of performance on, this comes from Joe Underwood, and we have done several inspections, and a lot of things weren't completed yet, plus things that, you know, for sanitary, stuff like that. So, um, it's informational to us at this point. We don't know whether the commissioner will go with this. And item number four is the revised map for the 5K race on Father's Day. The Sheriff's Department's happy with the way we changed it, so is fire, and so am I.
Got revised.
They took it off a lake side, they took it off a, it's hard to read on here.
Yeah, it is.
It's off.
So we're gonna be just closing Broad Avenue now, and it's outside streets. More conversation.
No, I think the safety force's concern's the number one. So if you guys are comfortable with it.
We had contact about the other, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Closes road. It's gonna take us to zoning department, and I am going to turn that over to Mr. Paul.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, item number one, the side lot program. If you recall, at our last, last meeting, there was a question about, um, one parcel on 26th Street, this one that was going to be going to, uh, City of Canton for the first tee. Uh, it is to the first tee. Uh, there was, there was just an address mix-up on the application. We confirmed, bring that away with the administrator of the side lot program, Mr. Green, but this parcel would go to the first tee.
So move on zoning number one.
Second. Discussion.
Roll call.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Zoning number two, uh, we have a property condemnation, um, upon going out to investigate a complaint about high grass, um, we noticed the house is basically losing its foundation. That this, my belief that this foundation was probably caused by actions over the course of the winter, as this property was not on any of our lists from last year for nuisance abatements. It does look like people are attempting to do work inside by getting close to peer through the windows. I didn't get real close. Uh, this, uh, foundation in both the rear and the back, I'm sorry, the rear and the front has collapsed.
Totally blown in.
Oh, yeah. The rear is just about totally gone. The front's probably about a third gone as well. My guess is the only thing holding it up right now is the center beam. That's gotta be going 105 miles.
As far as, I'm gonna make a motion.
You have a letter from, I'm sorry, you also have a letter from the Stark County Building Department there.
I'm gonna move on zoning number two. Just further discussion. Denny, how soon do we know we can actually get somebody out here just to, you know, get after this? I'm assuming there's a pass, this is a payment.
Well, I.
Do we need to authorize up to dollar amount on this for?
What we need to do is to, uh, obviously, it's gonna be a 30-day notification. We're gonna be authorized a full title search, uh, gonna be the newspaper advertisements, all the paperwork. I'm checking with the, uh, King City Health Department individual for asbestos, was tied up over the holiday weekend. I'm trying to check with her as to whether or not this can be done without the need to anyone go in this house. Because I've got news, I'm not gonna win it. Yeah, you know, it's gotta be totally unsafe to be walking around inside that. Uh, so, you know, I'm gonna call in to her to find out what we need to do, and then, uh, so we can base, we can go back and base, uh, the demo cost on some of what we did for the move on forward program and set some kind of, uh, a price for what similar demo was with that one. But this one is, is obviously unsafe. Um, thanks to Mr. Iacino and his, his folks, we did put fencing around the house to keep these people away from it. Um, it's obviously a true danger to the neighborhood.
Now, we tracked, we tracked the time, time of materials.
Yeah.
On network, so ultimately, that's gonna be part of the whole cost that's assessed.
Right, last Friday afternoon, or last Friday morning, we did run it last time.
Actually, get that taken care of. Let's see, roll call. Mr. Lea?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's a true concern there in the neighborhood. Um, zoning number three, we have eight nuisance abatements before you this evening.
The first one on 3A, 1119 Rushmore. For state updates, because I was through there this past weekend, and I thought, I don't know what certainty, but I'm pretty sure somebody happened to knock, knock that grass down, because that's on the corner of Ave Road, or am I?
No, that, no, that was another one that was high. It was on the corner, it got knocked down.
Okay.
This is a couple of blocks in.
Okay.
And, uh, the photos you have, we're taking this morning.
That's the one I texted. This is the one I texted you. Okay.
Right. We took photos there this morning. It was so high. Now, that, that's the grass one. Uh, we have 3343 Easton, which is grass. We have 3830 High Spire, which is a vehicle. 3316 Middle Branch is trash. 5731 Middle Branch is high grass. 7395 Rowing Ridge is high grass. Uh, 313, 33rd Street is high grass and some, uh, board up work, and 160934 Street is grass.
Also move on zone three, A through H.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That concludes zoning. That's gonna take us to parks department. I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Steinberg.
Gentlemen, the first item for you is to hire a concession worker at 795 per hour from Fund 14A01B, Ms. Saran's.
Also move, parts one.
Second.
Discussion, point of clarification. This is just a replacement.
Yeah, we've lost several over the winter. Um, this is just somebody that we can utilize in concessions for not only our, our scheduled programming weekly with the tournaments and events as well.
Roll call.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Uh, number two, also a resolution to hire one Sarah Wettner at the same rate, from the same fund, for the same reasons, concessions. Um, both these kids are college kids, um, returned home. Um, we could utilize them not only in concessions, but some of our evening programming that'll be indoors inside the facility, uh, in the upcoming couple months. So.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Finally, item number three is a resolution, um, for the Plankton's reported trustees of County Highway authorized purchase of a bucket loader from Homer Unkerfer Incorporated and authorized payment not to exceed $6,675 from Fund 01B06. This is the, um, option to replace the original ask for the, um, obcat that we didn't feel we needed. After researching further, we found that a couple of these attachments look solved the problem.
So move on parts three.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, what, what new equipment does that cover?
We call the tractor that was purchased a year or two ago. I don't remember what it was.
The New Holland, the blue New Holland, it's, um, it's, I don't know, a couple years old.
I think it was purchased in 2012. I'm a lot of persons certain.
This will serve their purpose for needing a body.
Mr. Iacino helped us research, and still we found something that was reasonable and solved our needs.
Further discussion?
Roll call. Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
That concludes parks. Nothing from the law director. Communications, we have nothing. Takes us to public speaks. If there's anybody in the crowd, the very slim crowd that wishes to address the board. Okay, that opposed to public speaks, concerns of trustees, concerns of the fiscal officer?
None.
Um, let's see, this is gonna take us to approval of the minutes for May 13th, 2014, which also move, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And then there is a need for executive session, so be hereby resolved by the Plankton's reported trustees of Stark County, Ohio, to adjourn the executive session at 6:39 PM from this regular meeting is authorized under Ohio Revised Code 121-22G for the purpose and consideration of 2A, the purchase of real personal tangible or intangible property, and 2B, the sale of property by competitive bid to prevent the disclosure of information that would provide competitive advantage. Discussion.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Roll call. Sorry about that. Mr. Hawes?
Yes.